Seven o'clock, we'll be heading to call the July council meeting in order. Roll call?
Here.
Approve that?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Webb?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Helsa?
Here.
Booth?
Here.
First is approval of the last month's minutes.
Move.
Second. Motion second to approve the June council minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is treasurer's report.
Move.
Second.
There's a motion second to approve the treasurer's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Next is citizens forum. Gentlemen? Okay. Next is we had a discussion about insurance coverage for the party animal request for two weeks.
Conversation we had when we were talking about our event last week during, I want to say it was the public safety meeting or something along those lines. We had went over the event in basically the same situations as years past. We've done it obviously two years in the past. And there was a situation brought up about a liability insurance for the event itself, such as a special event insurance or whatnot. It was mentioned and then kind of came to a closure as to it hadn't been done in the past and there hadn't been requirements per the city to have that during that time when we did it in the past or even past events not necessarily ours. And then I received a call the following day from Rick in regards to they, you guys had had a conversation when we had left about the possibility of, you know, maybe we should require that there'd be proof of liability insurance for the event. And I got a message from Rick, I hadn't got a chance to get back to him and then the following day I had received a message or a call from Joe and I'm not sure exactly which other alderman had been on the phone but, okay. And actually I think Bob is the one that brought up the original concern to everybody when I was still here during that meeting. And then with the conversation basically was that we, I wasn't a part of the conversation to have a liability insurance at that meeting. When I got his, I'm sorry, Rick, when I got Rick's voicemail, I immediately started looking into quotes and trying to figure out, you know, if it's plausible or why, you know, what would the, the plan of action would be before I called him back. So I was kind of busy with things, didn't get a chance to call him back right away and then obviously the second call. During that call, we had kind of talked about, you know, what had happened in the past and why, I was kind of questioning as to why the request for the liability insurance based on the fact that it hadn't been something that you guys had looked at in the past. The liability insurance that we carry as a business obviously, I mean, we carry tons of insurances across the board, more than most. I'm sure pretty much everybody's aware of that. And liability is one of my biggest concerns, you know, we, if something happens in the store, we're liable for it, so we have to carry insurance in that case. And, you know, it's always a good idea to cover yourself, so it's not a bad idea to have liability insurance whatsoever. The bank obviously carries liability insurance for their parking lot and for the bank itself, as well as the city for the park and for the crosswalks and things like that or roads, what have you. But I guess my, my situation with the, the conversation with those two gentlemen was misunderstood, I guess, in the best respect of that, you know, I was trying to voice my opinion that we hadn't had that happen in the past and that there weren't any requirements per the city to do so, to provide a liability insurance for a special event. And if that's the case, you know, maybe we rethink how we do special events in the town, whether there's, there are certain criteria that need to be followed and this needs to be on paper with the city when an event is done, you know, so that we're following it in a, a non, I guess a paperwork sort of way rather than, well, I think we need to have liability this year, well, we hadn't had it in the past and we hadn't talked about it, it's not a requirement per the city, any, any kind of permits or things like that, as well as me being a part of other meetings with other events. We had an event that was two months prior to that with the healthy people in Nacusa. I had spoke with them and at that meeting, there was no requirements from the city perspective for liability insurance to cover themselves. They did however have liability insurance and that was provided to the church. The church requested that they have liability insurance for their parking lot. Understandable concerns obviously, but I guess what, the conversation that I'm getting at is that when we had that conversation, I wasn't a part of, you know, why we're having liability insurance questioned or why, you know, what is it in need of, is the city worried about being liable for certain things?
The reason, the reason the city is concerned, and this is true with almost any entity that you could possibly think of, if somebody is sponsoring a, an event, your property, in this case, city property, okay, absent of that person that's doing the event, absent then having liability insurance, if there's an injury or in a claim arising out of that injury, we all know who's going to be on the spot, it's going to be the city, the city's liability insurance carrier, when in fact the city probably didn't have anything to do with the injury, they didn't cause it. That's the reason, that's the reason for requesting the certificate of liability insurance and I didn't realize it wasn't requested last year. It's standard operating procedure.
For, for previous years for, for not just my event, like you said, multiple events.
But there have been other events where there has been.
Hasn't been insurance.
And a lot of times we think, we just think it's.
It's standard protocol, right, and it is.
It's supposed to be there. We usually tell them, we, as part of the conversation, you have a million dollar rider, we got to have a million dollar rider.
I'd be surprised if you had to lay out any extra premium, if you, have you contacted any?
I have, I've talked to multiple insurance companies in, in respect to that.
Well, the one to talk to would be yours.
Well, right, our insurance, it's a special event insurance is the difference. Our, our business policy is for our business per se.
Yeah, normally liability insurance on your policy will cover an event away or a claim or an accident away from your premises as well as on your premises.
That you own. They're not covering anything that happens in the bank parking lot, my, my policy's not going to cover the bank parking lot. The, the bank parking lot is going to be covered by.
Did your agent tell you that?
What's that?
Did your agent tell you that?
Correct, yes. That's, that's, that's part of a business policy. Your business policy doesn't extend to a public park or, say it was Riverside Park and if, if I had an event that was not even in the city.
I don't know who your agent is, but normally.
Our agent is Patty from, from.
Any general liability policy coverage and you would have a package policy that you would have would cover, would cover events unless it's a trap shooting or something like that or fireworks.
The, the insurance that you're speaking of is called a special event insurance. It's a separate insurance that's based, not based on your, your current business liability insurance. So if something happens, say somebody were to fall, God forbid, I guess, you know, and get, and get hurt, that the proper signage is there, things like that, so that those kinds of things can be looked at and it's only, it's only per the property that you own.
Did you ask your agent, will you, will you cover, will you issue the certificate of insurance to the city of Nacusa showing that we have liability coverage in the event something happens at this event?
I have liability insurance and I can, I can provide it to.
The question is, did you ask her?
Yes, I've talked to her and she referred me to another person in Rapids that she deals with with special event insurance, which would be.
What's a premium cost?
Premiums are a little different depending on insurance companies, the one that she had me contact was roughly about $280 for three hours. There are other ones that are more along the lines of around a hundred dollars, they're both online as well as different things when you input. I have a, I have a brother-in-law that actually had handles insurance as well and I spoke with him in regards to it and they actually ended up venturing out to the same company that was doing the insurance, which would have been Westbin Mutual and speaking with them and based on special event insurance, I mean, like I said, as insurance goes, I'm pretty much.
No, no, I'm, right now I'm focused on. On what's the Westbin quote?
Uh, Westbin is 279.
So, I can ask the mayor, did you want special, did you want special events insurance in place? Is that the?
Well, that was kind of the discussion we had. Like you said, there's been some that we've requested it when something happened and I know Sean is starting to work on a permit ordinance or a permit plan, which there would have different criteria required for it. So, I mean, if, if the council is requesting it, then I guess we're going to have to have it.
Your, your agent specifically told you that you need special events liability coverage?
That is correct. In fact, not only, not only just per, like with that event specifically, but like I said, you know, I, what I was getting at was I'm, I'm kind of the insurance guru, I mean, we had sign insurance at our last place with a sign that was still on your property, a wind blows it down, it's not covered because of your business insurance. They're not going to cover something that's not on your property, pretty much in general. I mean, they, they try to find, I hate to say it in insurance terms, but they try to find a lot of ways to figure out how you're not covered. We ended up having to pull sign insurance for a sign that was not on the building itself. So, I mean, I know all of the ins and outs of insurance and special event insurance would be required in this case and the other events such as the pumpkin fest, you know, they carry insurance through this provider that I had called, Webfest, they've done insurance with Webfest, obviously there's alcohol involved there. You know, this insurance provider has, has talked to the person that did the healthy people in Nacusa, you know, obviously the bank, I would, I would assume that Rob would want a copy of liability insurance based on it's on his property as well, you know, those are things that are relative, the liability insurance is a good idea.
Do you know if the, what's that healthy people, what is it?
Healthy people in Nacusa?
Yeah, do you know if they purchase special events liability coverage?
Yes, they did.
They did?
Yes. They, they are a nonprofit, they had to carry insurance based, per the church's request.
Well, the, the regular underlying insurance is quite broad, that's why I keep asking this question about special events liability insurance. Many times it's not required depending on the, you know, the activity itself.
In this case it would be.
I see.
And in most other cases that I've heard of, it, it hasn't. I've been a part of a lot of different events, not just locally here and knowing that there's always a liability concern. You know, the liability I guess in, in question, this event in particular is, you know, we have a liability for people that come into our store, just on any given day, there's probably insurance for the streets.
Yeah, we're aware of that, that's just.
Right, and then, and then the, the bank carrying their insurance for their parking lot and he's aware, you know, that he's liable under his parking lot. So we haven't had in-depth conversation whether he would require that from me because I'm putting that event on in his parking lot, in fact, that's something I need to address with him. But I'm just trying to understand, you know, not being in the past and not ever having talked about it and then not to mention not being a part of the conversation, like I'm glad we're having this conversation now because it's kind of, we cleared everything and then I get a phone call the next day and it's like, oh hey, by the way, you got to spend another, you know, it's like, well, wait a second here, you know, the insurance that we have covers our.
That's not how the conversation, that's not how the conversation went because Bob, if we talk about insurance, everybody shuts up and listens to Bob.
Sure.
Because Bob, you, you know, you've insured most of us, if not all of us in this room at one time, we're not about what you're, you know, I know you don't, I know you're not, you're not into the game full-time, but you, you pretty much are the smartest one in the room on this, this subject. One of the things he did bring up was that.
No, no, he is.
No, 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 no.
Anyhow, anyhow, what we said was is more than likely your rider on your, on your insurance policy through your business should cover this. That's what he was thinking. One other thing that came up during that conversation, I was here for all the conversations, was that we usually, normally do put a million dollars on it. Him and I had a conversation of, well, I thought we went a little higher than a million and I couldn't remember that if we did or not, but a million dollars is normal rider policy.
Sure.
And normal liability. And, and we weren't looking at giving you any more expense, what we were thinking was is we, all we need is a piece of paper saying that we're, we're covered under your thing, that's what we usually get from you.
If, if there's a, in question as far as the, the depth of the liability coverage for the business policy, I'd be happy to have her share that, you know, or, or bring, bring that in for that being coverage for the liability, if in fact in some small writing that is the case and my insurance agent is not aware of that, but I spoke directly with her. I, I mean, you know, if, if that really is the case, we can obviously provide that, I mean, that's no big deal whatsoever.
Did they tell you specifically that the way your policy is written right now without any special event coverage, that they could or could not issue a certificate of liability insurance?
Specific conversation was that if you hold an event, you need to have special event insurance. It's not your current business policy that would cover you.
Okay, that's.
That's the, the gist of the conversation.
That's where you are, okay.
Unfortunately, that makes sense to me too and I think the key thing is being, it's not your property.
Correct. Because how, how far would that extend, I guess is my question.
If you had that field in the back of your business and it was your property or a problem.
Right, exactly. Same, same way if I had a parking lot or something.
For me, it makes sense why you would have to have a, basically what you call an umbrella bond.
So, so the gist of it is that you're able to provide for you?
Of course, the, the current policy, yes, of course. And, and not to mention, you know, if, if we decide that in other future events that are, that are done in the city, which I, once again, think is a great idea, is to carry a liability insurance, to make that a requirement for anybody to prove, because whether that be proved to the city or proved to the person that owns the property, I think both, both of them are owed that, at least, unless they're willing to cover their liability.
I think Webpass is our, but oversight, we just assume everybody's doing it. Ask the question and like.
What constitutes a special event though? We can get right down.
There's something like that held on city property because like in, in Thompson Park.
Does the car show have to have proof of insurance, oh yeah, the proof of insurance with car show on Thursdays at Riverside Park?
I don't know if you guys mandated that or not.
I mean, if somebody's selling corn on Main Street, does he have to have liability insurance? I mean, I'm not trying to be facetious here.
I guess originally the, the car show like where it was too pumpkin fest would have been covered then, but this other, this.
Rolling.
I wasn't at those, I wasn't at those meetings when I, I don't really care about, so I don't know.
I don't even know if we asked the question.
No.
Yeah, I mean, is that something that has to be done? I mean, if, if we're looking at forcing this gentleman here to do the special event insurance and from here on or whenever it gets approved, we're going to have to, everybody that has a special event's going to have to have it, you know.
And then that's what, what you will address.
Isn't John working on it now?
Yeah, I think Sean said he'll be on that right now.
And I would, I would think something like car shows or anything like that would be, you know, anything that's going to draw people into public property, whether you're selling anything or not, or whether it's just a show of gold, you want that coverage.
Yeah, because you're a specific organization that's using it for that. But if we have it, it's been an oversight ability.
Right.
You know.
Definitely, not, not a, not an intended one by any means, but, you know.
Because I think on some of those things we forget because the city itself has recreational immunity for itself. We're not necessary, I mean, it will change quickly if I say something wrong.
Maybe we can't be sued.
Well, yeah. Well, we can always.
What's the difference, you know, I'm not an insurance man either, but what's the difference if you say I'm for 25 bucks, you know, I'm going to rent out that shelter house down there and.
You're not doing.
No, 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 well, I was saying like if, let's say, let's say I did and there's a huge crowd down there from, you know, for a party or whatever, that rivals any crowd that's down there for the car club. Then, then the car club, they have it, but then yet, you know, I have a private party down there and I, I, I don't, I don't think I, I would need it, you know, but, and so where you, where you drawing the line? I mean.
Well, I think that's what Sean's working on.
That's what I'm working on, I think for this discussion probably the solution is in differentiating between a private event and a public event where people can come and assemble. So, where, where are we at? Randy, what, what are you looking for tonight?
I was just looking to understand, I was looking to understand the discussion.
We're asking from him? We're asking him to provide the.
Well, I, I guess why I'm here blatantly is that the discussion that happened when I left and I wasn't a part of and then to get a phone call the next day to ask me whether or not, you know, I'm, I'm doing this, this is, you know, okay, well, then I'll get quotes and I have no problem doing that and I have no problem providing it, but it's, it's just the, I guess the, the raise of the hand, you think that liability insurance should be required and then there's nothing on paper that says, you know, the city requires this. What insurances does, does the city carry on any given day for a park or for the street? I mean, this stuff can happen on any given, you know, it's kind of one of those things where it's, it's a roundabout.
We have state law to back us up on a lot of our stuff. If, if you use our parks and you break your leg, you're, it's, it's basically on your heel because it's, we have a, there's a, there's a statute that was set up I don't know how many years ago, that unless it's, you know, blatant, you know, we, you know, we have something that's blatant, but if it's, if you just go use one of our parks, you get hurt, you're, it's your problem, not ours, you can sue us, which you're going to lose.
Would that not be the same situation on any given day?
This is not a, this is not a, people just using a park, this is a special event that you're putting on. That's what the, do we have, and does it, that's what I was going to ask, does this make a difference whether you're, you're in our park or not in the park, I should say, you're in the park, does this have to be covered specially just because it's, you know, in the park? What you're doing is I, you know, it's me and my, me and my five grandkids, well, now it's me and my five grandkids and 600 other people that are in that park, just because you put it on or just because Brad didn't, Brad invited them, what's the difference between the two? Is there a difference? Is there a liability thing? You know, alcohol's involved, that's one thing, you know, different, different, different stuff. So that's what Sean's trying to get, get through and go through and get us that ordinance set up. That, well, we've got a, we've got a, we've got an event in two weeks, what are we going to do with it? I, by myself, I think we've got to have insurance one way or another at a million dollar rider like we normally have. I, it came up as, well, yeah, he's going to have insurance, well, do we have the thing on? You know, do we have something saying that? We, I think we all kind of just sat here, hello, you know, do we have it? You know, I don't think we did.
The, the other.
I don't think we made you do it, tell you the truth.
Well, right, but see at the same token, it seemed like the assumption might have been that it was on my business policy, you know, that, that was the case and if that, for some reason, an oversight by the insurance, my insurance agent for sure, I mean, I can obviously read through every fine print that's possible and provide that liability, not, not me per se, but let her know, hey, you know, look into this and let me know, you know, we, we had a, a conversation, you know, sat down and said, hey, is this, no, this is what you need to do, oh, okay, give me the number for the guy and I called him. I mean, I don't know all of the insurances as to where they end and where they start, you know, so I'm not an insurance agent obviously, but the assumption was that that would be covered under our standard business policy. If it is, I've got a copy of that today, you know, but if it's a special, special event insurance that's needed like my insurance agent had spoken about, then that's a whole different story. That's, that's a whole separate thing that, no, I, I didn't, that was an oversight on my behalf too, you know, I want to be covered liability wise for me in general, but what liability does the city hold, you know, that something could happen on their behalf? I, that's the part where it lost me. I, I could see in the parking lot for the bank, you know, not wanting him to have to cover his insurance when something, you know, it's kind of.
He has to tell you that, we can't tell you to cover the bank right now.
Exactly.
So let me ask you this Randy, if, if you're concerned about liability insurance and you have this, this event and someone gets hurt off your property, you're saying your insurance does not cover off the property, you could be sued and you're, you're open, you're opening yourself up for liability, in effect what you're just saying, so it sounds like you need this event insurance in order to protect yourself already.
If that's just above and beyond, I don't know what the, the park, like he just said with the state, you know, if something gets hurt in the park, how can they come after me if they're on private or public property?
They're going to sue you because it's your event.
Well.
Your event. If people sue, they sue everybody.
Right.
Well, lawyers are going to walk in the door, I apologize to every lawyer in the state of Wisconsin right now. A lawyer's going to walk in, they're going to say, who was all involved in this? The city had the park, the bank has the, the lot, you, you're, you're putting it on, the Cub Scouts had popcorn there and he went to reach for popcorn, tripped over a, tripped over a power cord that was provided by the state of Wisconsin, you know, then everybody's going to get in on it. Now who ends up, you know, the judge is going to say, nope, city of Nacusa is out, nope, bank is out, nope, this is out, but everybody's going to get sued and what that insurance is going to provide you with is, is coverage over, and Bob, like you said, if I'm saying something wrong, coverage over, what if you end up being the last guy in the, in the roundup? You know what I mean? There's going to be a big roundup and there's going to be somebody that's going to be the corpse, core at the end and who's that going to be? Is it going to be us, you, them, him?
Well, that's a foresight, I mean, it, it could happen a bunch of different ways pending any, if some, someone walked out of the store and tripped on the sidewalk, they were in our store, they're going to look at us, we're going to be in that same ballpark less than the event. You know, they're still going to go after the city for the sidewalk or they're going to go after me for the fact that maybe when they walked out, the ramp wasn't, whatever, I don't know. You know, you could, you could go on forever, people aren't happy about that every day.
What are we going to do about this event? What are we going to do? That's what we got to decide.
Do you, can you provide us?
I can.
What type of insurance?
I can do two things. I'm looking at the insurance policies for the special event insurance, so that can be something that if we decide that that's what we need to do, I can do that. Otherwise I can provide the liability insurance for the business policy that we currently have in place, if there's anything on there that shows that it's covered under specific event, you know, whatever the case. I, I guess if I had a parking lot, it would probably be easier because then we use our parking lot and then our insurance would cover our parking lot. The problem is that you involve different.
Two or three different factors.
And that's when we had that discussion that night, that's what we were under pressure is that your liability insurance.
You just got to get a rider.
You carry it across the street.
Right, it's just the.
And we figured we'll just get, we'll have, we'll call, send us over a, a form that says city of Nacusa on it and we're done. We didn't think it was going to turn out to be this.
Neither would I, yeah.
So, I mean, if you can get just that rider, great, get us a copy of that and we're good. If unfortunately you can't, then I guess we're going to have to have you get the special event. Is there a possibility of getting it? I mean, if you're looking at, you were talking about another ride maybe in the fall, was there going to be, were you, I think, were you talking about a fall ride?
Yeah, yeah, well, we'll do a, a spring, a summer and a fall ride.
Would that be something where you would get one that would cover all three events or?
Well, that's, you know, that's a funny, once again, back to the event thing, this is more like, you know, if people show up on any given day and we decided to go for a ride, we're leaving the city immediately, we're not having anything additional other than them coming in the store, setting up for the ride and leaving. How do you, you know?
Right.
Call it an event at certain occasions, well, what, what is, yeah, exactly, I could have a special event every day if that would be the case. I mean, in a positive way, I hope that happens, but.
Most of that stuff is covered without special events coverage, okay? You're covered off your premises in, in many ways under your general liability insurance.
It, it just.
It's up to the, it's up to the insurance company underwriter that you're dealing with, that's writing your insurance, to make any decision, is this, is this covered under our policy, your policy, or isn't it? And then that questioning what your agent told you, I'm sure you have a damn good agent, but is this what the company said, the insurance company said? That's the important thing.
So, that conversation can't happen, obviously, and, and I spoke with Joe about it too, stating, you know, that if this is something that's required, we need to, you know, think about if that's something across the board, not just for this event. I mean, like you just said, the car club and everything else, I mean, I hate to, and I'm not putting their foot in their mouth, I'm not trying to address that with everybody and be like, hey, everybody needs to pull out insurance and.
No, this is something we should do for the city to help, to help the city out too. And unfortunately, it's just something that's been overlooked for years. Certain events when it was big time like the, like the pumpkin fest is big, it was just a given, everybody always knew that that's what was going to happen. Your smaller events and stuff, you just kind of went along with it, you know, and really we.
Fireworks were required.
But really we should be, to my, you know, well, we'll, we'll have to wait, actually see what Sean comes up with and then decide if that's what.
That was kind of my, that was kind of my take on the, the end of the conversation That was kind of my, that was kind of my take on the, the end of the conversation that I had with Joe. It seemed as though, uh, Robert, Robert, it seemed like Robert had stepped out of the conversation, gave a meeting or something, but me and Joe went on to talk a little bit more about, you know, what are the things that are in place that the city requires already for any of that kind of thing? And, I mean, me prospectively not to cover, to cover myself with liability, yes, it's a great idea, but on the other side of the coin, to provide it to the bank, to provide, he can ask for it, but it's like, I'm using his property, so he, he has every right to ask for it. But in the city's respect, it's kind of like, should there be paperwork in place so that everybody has to follow, here's what you need to provide when you're doing a certain thing, and I mean, I mean, not just in two weeks, I mean, you know.
That's something that Sean is working on, and I think we've had enough on this discussion.
Okay.
Um, so I mean, provide us with one or the other of your insurance.
Chief of Staff.
Council, okay with that?
Yes, good.
Sound good.
Okay.
Yeah.
And like I said, we're, Sean's working on that ordinance and, and, uh, basically it'd be a packet of requirements.
Sure.
Next, going to committee reports, first is Ways and Means.
First of all, we need to make a change, or an addition, I should say, we need to add the date, June 12th, and the time, 6:15.
Let's do it, let's do it July 12th. Okay.
July, yeah. We did that last month.
We got July.
Month behind. Okay, Ways and Means held one meeting, I move to accept the minutes as written.
Second. Here's a motion, a second to approve the minutes of the Ways and Means Committee has written, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Makusa Common Council, the Ways and Means meeting was held on July 12th at 6:15 PM in the Makusa Council Chambers. Members present were Emmett Peterson, Robert Schultz, August Boyack, Garrett Coon. Also in attendance were Al Marco, Rick Schmidt, Roger Wenzel, Barry Christian from Tri-County Insurance. Number one, we audited the bill list. Uh, number two, we had an alcohol beverage retail license for Chong Jager. We had operator licenses for Judith Downey, Timothy Olson, Candace Leavens, Ann Sager, Caroline Skidmore.
Erin McKee.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carolyn McKee, Aaron Larson, Cindy Schmidt, that is, Jennifer Lowbush.
Lowbush.
Kenneth Barton, and Gary Walcott. Uh, number three, we had an insurance discussion with Tri-Cord Insurance. Number four, we recommended sponsoring One Hole for the golf outing of the Makusa Baseball and Softball Association for $100. And number three, or number five, we had the library report from Robert Wenzel. Have any questions? Move to adopt items one, two, and four.
Second. Here's a motion, a second to approve items one, two, and four of the Ways and Means report. Walcott? Wenzel? Yes. Coon?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Kupsev?
Yes.
Man?
Yes.
Next is Public Works.
Public Works has one thing to record on, I need to have the minutes accepted as written.
Second. Here's a motion, a second to approve the Public Works minutes as written, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Makusa Common Council, Public Works meeting was held on Tuesday, July 5th, 2016 at 9:00 AM in the Makusa Council Chambers. Members present were Larry Kretsek, Barry Shemansky, Robert Schultz. Also in attendance were Alan Schmidt, Jim Quinn, City Attorney, and Shawn Woods, Police Chief. Item one, discuss Wisconsin, our WDNR ordinance for mobile, solid, non-structural materials. Item two, recommend getting contract proposal from advanced disposal for recycling. Item three, discuss PST simplified water rate increase. Item four, recommend sewer special assessment for tax ID 30-00363, property at intersection of Thurston and Vilas Avenue for $2,150. Item five, update on Pointfest Avenue. Item six, discuss electrical work at Riverside Park. Item seven, discuss Enbridge urgency response training at Riverside. Questions? Do not move to adopt items two and four.
Second. Here's a motion, a second to approve items two and four of the Public Works report. Walcott? Schultz?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Kupsev?
Yes.
Next is Public Safety.
Public, Public Safety had one meeting, I move to minutes be accepted as written.
Second. Here's a motion, a second to approve the Public Safety minutes as written, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Public Safety Committee meeting was held Tuesday, July 5th, 2016 at 5:00 PM in the Makusa Common Council Chambers. Members Brad and Terry Shemansky, Brad Hamilton, Emmett Peterson, Robert Wenzel. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Robert Schultz, August Boyack, Emmett Peterson, Rick Schmidt, Shawn Woods, Mike Harchey, Dave Reinschner. Number one, Kip Rose retired from the fire department with 21 and a half years service. Number two, discuss fire officer position. Number three, recommend Carolyn McKee as a new fighter. Number four, Engine Ford is back in service. Number five, recommend one officer of 10 Highway Safety Conference, August 23rd to the 25th in Green Bay, ask for contact. Uh, any questions? First name is, number three, Carolyn McKee will be our first female firefighter. Uh, I recommend this fee and number five.
Second. Here's a motion, a second to approve items three and five of the Public Safety Committee report. Walcott? Wenzel?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Kupsev?
Yes.
Schultz? Next is Property Recreation Human Affairs.
The Honorable Mayor and members of Makusa Council, the minutes be accepted as written.
Second. Here's a motion, a second to approve the Property Recreation Human Affairs Committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
A Property Recreation Human Affairs Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, July 5th, 2016 at 6:00 PM in the Makusa Council Chambers. Members present were Robert Wenzel, Chairman, Emmett Peterson, Secretary, Garrett Coon, August Boyack. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Robert Schultz, Brad Hamilton, Jim Lizer, Police Chief Shawn Woods, and Richard Lee. Number one, discuss outdoor recreational plan. Number two, discuss business grants. Number three, discuss flashbang. Number four, discuss cemetery plan update. Number five, recommend use of Thompson Park for the Party Animal Summary Event, July 23rd, 2016. And then number six, a motion by Wenzel, second by Coon, go to closed session. For search to Wisconsin's last 19.851, regarding properties located in industrial park. Wenzel, yes. Peterson, yes. Coon, yes. Boyack, yes. Motion carried. Make a motion to accept number five.
Second. Here's a motion, a second to approve item five of the Property Recreation Human Affairs report. Walcott? Schultz?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Kupsev?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Anybody have anything under old business?
I just have one question. Since we discussed the insurance, would that be recorded in minutes as part of the council? Or should I modify my minutes? Just, I just, just so you have, you know, it's recorded.
Well, if you're asking me, I mean, I just have to discuss, here's what I have, discuss special, special event slash insurance coverage for Party Animal Summary Event on July 23rd at Thompson Park. And that's, that we discussed, uh, we really didn't take any action, did you, is it the consensus of the council? Is that, uh, insurance be provided for this event?
I think that's what, yes.
Yeah.
Proof of insurance.
Proof of insurance.
I was just wondering, because I've modified my minutes.
Proof of insurance is required.
Okay, the only, I'm sorry, the only side note I have on that one is the requirements that Sean is going through for the events for future ones. This one, we've already kind of covered, but the future ones, not only ours, but just in, in general, that we come up with a way that structures it so that this is a requirement, you know.
That's what Sean's coming up with.
Yeah, right.
That would be, that would be real.
So we've addressed this one, but then in the future ones, we'll have paperwork in place to.
Uh, probably Sean will bring it back to Public Safety, right, Sean? That's the plan?
Okay.
Sorry.
Sean, do you have something else?
Oh, with my microphone.
Either one, doesn't matter. If you want to, go ahead now. Um, just want to bring everybody up to speed a little bit, where things have fallen into place since the new position, kind of what's happened in the last month, just a update. And I laid some of this out in my monthly report. Since the 6th of June, I think, was the first day we started that, we served suit, served two search warrants on houses involving illegal drugs. We referred to 18 drug arrests or citations. During one interview, one of the people that was arrested for possession of heroin said that her boyfriend used $120 of heroin a day. So that would calculate out to nearly $44,000 of heroin that potentially could have been run into the city, that hopefully now won't. And that's just one home. Uh, and there are about 10 working investigations that Officer Hans got going right now. And in my monthly report, if you haven't seen that yet, I added a drug offenses chart, one there and one at the bottom, so we can kind of track and see what's been happening, um, it's comparison of the last two years and then to date so far each one. If anybody has any questions on any of that at any time, feel free to email or call or stop me.
How do they pay for that drugs?
Correctly. However, you probably would guess, generally, people that don't have jobs steal.
Any Ways and Means cost them.
Yeah.
You took that off the street too. Okay, thank you, Sean. Uh, going into new business, first on the agenda is budget resolution to transfer money into an account to cover the costs of the skate park. There's two, two transfers to take place. Everybody got a copy of it?
Make move, or make, make a motion to approve the resolution for the two transfers of $35,000 and $25,527.
Here's a motion, a second to approve the resolution to transfer money to cover the cost of the skate park. Walcott? Kupsev?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Chief, how's it going? You guys are pretty well used. I drove by once.
As of today.
Skate park?
Yeah.
Skate park.
Yeah, um, I didn't get a look at it myself today. Um, I don't think we're any, get out there. And I think that there were still some tiny up to do that they weren't, people wanted until today, so.
I came in from work, there was at least one place there.
That's our corp being out there today in the season.
Okay, going into monthly reports, first is Police Chief's monthly report.
Mm-hmm.
Second. Motion, a second to approve Police Chief's monthly report, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is Code Enforcement Officer report.
Oh, second.
Here's a motion, a second to approve the Code Enforcement's monthly report, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I didn't get one.
Next is Public Works' monthly report.
Second.
Here's a motion, a second to approve Public Works' report, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is Fire Department's monthly report.
Mm-hmm.
Second. Here's a motion, a second to approve Fire Department's report, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is Community Center's monthly report. Second. Motion, a second for the Community Center, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Next is the Airport Commission. Brad?
Uh, nothing, we're, uh, we've met in closed session a couple of times, we're, uh, to figure out some stuff that we're looking at, obviously, I can't say you might have been in closed session. Uh, some positive stuff happening out there. Uh, we've got, uh, we're looking at bringing in, I don't know, the additional monies, or however you want to put it, with advertising inside the building, uh, putting up banners and stuff like that for cranberry companies or whatever, uh, golfing places that have to be opening up, or ones that are already open, however you want to look at it. Uh, it's just in general, uh, they, we've brought in, the county's provided people to help us with cleanup, with brush and, and stuff around the fence line. It's just, it's, it's really, it's coming together, it's, it's working, it's, everything's working really well. I don't know if anybody, if you get a chance to go up there, if you ever want to tour a bit, you're more than one, come up, anybody at most any time, unless he's got a lot of place in town, he'll, he'll show you a place, so I, I can also, you know, get together, I can also. It's really great, it's, uh, they had a amateur flying in, let's see, I mean, it was Thursday, so the amateur flying would have been Wednesday night. I couldn't make it because I was at, at church all night long, but, uh, it was very well attended. It's, they come in and they have amateurs with rods and hot dogs and whatever, and it's a, it's a fundraiser for other people, but it was very, very well attended, and everybody had a great time, so. And they host about two, three days a year. Different airports have it. It's, uh, it's a lot of fun, so. Do we have any questions? If you said, if you have something you want to.
Here's a motion, a second to approve the airport report.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve the report, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Uh, we had the three bill lists, and, uh, council meeting paid $520. Ways and Means, $250. $195 for Public Works, $250 Public Safety, Property Rec, $250 Camera 20. And we had the three bill lists.
Yeah, this guy here, Shawn Woods, did you get him or what?
Motion to approve the bills is presented.
Yeah, second.
Who made the motion?
Brad.
Okay.
Nice guy like that. Webb?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Kupsev?
Yes.
Schultz? Anybody have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Nice, second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?